Good evening. We're going to go ahead and get started here. This special meeting of the Board of Trustees is being held Tuesday, August the 10th. The meeting is to be called to order and the time is six o'clock. Everyone, can you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation Let's proceed to new business, but before we do that, we have individuals who are going to speak on the item, item 3A, tonight. So I'll go ahead, due to the fact that we have so many, a fair amount, we're going to limit it to about a three, three minutes per speaker. Once again, three minutes per speaker. We'll go ahead and begin with our first speaker.
Good afternoon, interim superintendent and members of the board. I am Nyleen Barera. As a student, I feel very unsafe in attending school. I firmly believe in the use of masks to help migrate mitigate the health problem we have in hand. I come to ask the board to consider the mask mandate except for outdoor sports and outdoor activities where we can social distancing can be implemented. Let's truly start putting us as students first. Thank you.
Next speaker, we have Judith Hizar.
Good afternoon, board members. I am Judith Hizar. I am a seventh grade science teacher at Desert Wind School. Like I said, I am a science teacher. According to ABC News and CBS News, there are about 70,000 to 90,000 of cases of children's COVID last week, just last week, okay? This doesn't include this week here locally. Several predeteritions have called this third wave an epidemic of young children, especially because of the Delta variant that's all transmissible. We don't know if it's transmissible, it's three or four times more in that amount of coming out. So we are asking that even though those children are not wearing masks, they might be passing it to other kids. As a teacher, I do worry, especially now that it's allergy season and cold season. We're on our tiptoes. Is that a sneeze, you know, without kids wearing a mask? Is that, does he might have COVID, he might not? And other students have also concerns about that. Dr. Ashish Yaw, dean of Brown University, said five tools to recommend to keep the schools open, to keep them open. Teachers are not asking to go virtually. We want to keep the schools open, but we want to keep it safely for everyone, not just kids and adults, also staff, everybody. So the five tools he recommends are masks, testing, distancing, ventilation, avoid indoor crowding. Middle schools have between 25 to 35 students in one classroom. Imagine if one student who is not wearing a mask goes in with COVID. Imagine the possibility of all those kids being affected. One way to mitigate is to ask to wear mask, everyone, is to ask everyone to, to wear a mask. Mohammed Gandhi had called for disobeying of unjust laws. Abbott's law is unjust because he's putting the risk of, the lives of everyone at risk, not just kids, but teachers. Us teachers, we have to go home. We have elderly that we, that we take care of. So we don't know right now, it's still, we're not even in the fall season and we have a lot of cases. So our concern is having to go home and transmit it to, even though there's vaccinated elderly, there's breakthrough cases and there's breakthrough cases that have led to death laws. So we're not even asking just for disobedience, but we could, you could ask like, for example, the San Antonio District asked and petitioned the judge to put a restraining order on that law and he was, they were granted. So how about Socorro SISD, ask for a limitation and a restraining order on Abbott's, the law that Governor Abbott passed. And thank you for your patience and I do consider it. My kids also worry about COVID being transmitted and other kids not wearing their masks. So it's, I'm a teacher, but I'm also a mom, so it's twofold. So thank you and I would consider you mandating everybody masks. Thank you.
Again, Ms. Heather Nieto? Okay, we're going to go ahead and go to the next speaker.
Good evening. President Morales, members of the board and interim superintendent Carmona. My name is Veronica Hernandez and I serve as president of the 2,000 members of Socorro American Federation of Teachers. Our recent Texas AFT statewide survey showed that 78% of educators favor local decision-making on mask use. We need to follow the science. We need to ensure the safety of our students, our employees, and our communities. While the vast majority of Socorro AFT educators and Socorro students want to be back in the classroom, I also know that they want to be in a safe school environment. Thankfully, vaccines are widely available to adults and kids over the age of 12 and those vaccines have proven effective against variants of the COVID-19, but vaccination rates are still low among Texans and our children under 12 aren't yet eligible to get vaccinated. Meanwhile, the Delta variant is spreading quickly through our communities, fueling a surge in COVID-19 cases. How can our schools, especially our elementary schools, be safe environments when you're not allowed to enforce measures like making, like mask, like wearing masks and reducing the transmission of the virus? Why would we make families choose between emotional health or the physical safety of their children as they return to campuses? Our state officials say that they are all about local control. What could prove their sincerity more than to allow local health officials and school districts to enforce mask wearing or face coverings during a national health crisis? However, in the final analysis, we must protect our students and employees to the best of our ability. I urge you to impose a temporary face covering mandate for employees and students of SISD until the science says otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Our next speaker is Chris M. Yost.
Good evening. My name is Chris Yost. I'm a disabled combat veteran and retired law enforcement officer with DHA at ICE. I fought for everyone's rights, including your right to either wear a mask or not to wear a mask. Okay? Mr. Morales, I have your bio here from the SISD website and I noticed that it says that you were a financial specialist and insurance person. Nowhere did I see anything about legal experience or medical experience. Okay? With that being said, I would just like to know is, for the calling of this meeting, what makes you the person of authority to call this, to try to impose or even entertain the idea of putting mask mandates on our students, especially my child, all of our children? Okay? Governor Greg Abbott on July 29th signed into law, as an executive order has the full force of law, under section, page four, section four, it says clearly, "No government entity, including a county, city, school district, and public health authority and no governmental official may require a person to wear a face covering or mandate that another person wear a face cover." Why are we having this discussion? It's a ready law. Okay? Point B states, this paragraph number four shall supersede any face covering requirement imposed by any local government entity or official, except as explicitly provided in paragraph 4A, to the extent necessary to ensure that local government entities or officials do not impose any such face covering requirements. And there's four provisions that have been ruled off the laws by Governor Greg Abbott. So as I said, I, as I stated, I'm a combat veteran and I depose tyrants overseas. I did not come home to my country and have my family exposed to the same things that dictators are doing 2,000 miles away. Okay? The Constitution of the United States and the Bill of Rights were created to secure the individual rights of the people, not the greater good of the society. And we're endowed by our Creator with these rights, not by bureaucrats, school boards, or politicians. We the people are your boss, not the other way around. Okay? If you continue to push the draconian agenda, we'll push back. We will take it to the courts and we the people will take back our schools and we can and we will remove each and every one of you. Okay? Pretty much, follow the law or face the lawsuits. We're already taxed to dear death in this county. You're just going to exacerbate that much with all these lawsuits if you continue the draconian methods. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Dr. Catherine Kirkendall.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Catherine Kirkendall. I'm a mother of five children, age nine and under, three of which attend James V. Beller Elementary School. This is what they had to say about masks. I hate masks. It's hot and it's hard to breathe. Masks are itchy. My teacher can't even see my face. During the 2020-2021 school year, parents of children who wanted their children to receive in-person learning were denied that opportunity. Even when schools opened, they were still denied that opportunity as they were forced to learn off of screens so that those who chose to keep their children home could continue to learn virtually. The desires of parents and students who desired, wanted, and many needed for certain various special needs reasons, in-person instruction were not considered. We were not given a choice. We were told, this is it or you can leave the district. And many people did. I personally know several parents that pulled their children out of this district. The current plan takes into account the comfort level of everybody in SISD and most importantly reinstated parent choice. And those same parents that left last year have returned to the district. Several forms of PPE are made available, including face mask, face shield, dust divider for anybody who desires it. And everyone in the building is subject to social distancing, elevated hygiene, and other protocols to keep people safe. This is the right way to make SISD the district of opportunity, the district of choice. This is how you keep the parents who left last year. Parents who felt last year their choice was not honored or that they were just not given a choice finally felt relief as you presented a plan, given parent input last year and back-to-school planning, that gives those parents the opportunity to decide what is best for their children. If the district chooses to enforce a mask mandate, they are choosing to take away parental choice. You have done this before and it was wrong. Parents are concerned. What will be mandated next? What other choices will we not be allowed to make for the health, safety, or education of our children? Has the district looked into other methods of transmission mitigation, such as improving the HVAC systems? At what point do you decide masks will no longer be necessary? If they are necessary while we are in the green zone, what can parents expect for the future? What if masks don't have a significant impact on spread? What is the next step with mandates? This is the real reason many are opposed to mask mandates. There is no game plan, there is no end game, and it leaves the door open to more invasive mandates that eliminate parent choice. We were assured at the end of last school year, at the several back-to-school planning meetings I and several other parents attended, that all parents would be accommodated. Holding a meeting to discuss this issue without properly even notifying all parents, including many of us that gave feedback at planning meetings and supported parent choice of PPE, shows a disregard for the people that you represent. I can appreciate that in a district with 47,000 students, there are several levels of comfort. The district has already found a way to address these levels, all of them, and it is imperative that they stick to the plan. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. The question remains, is removing the mask mandate ban an action you would uphold at all costs? I believe the best option is to maintain a parent's legal right to protect their child from harm. First, the governor offers free PPE, a mask, a desk shield, a face shield, increased hygiene, and reminds us of our right to talk with our own medical providers to make the best informed decision, which I have. Given these tools, I question the hasty reaction school boards are taking towards government orders and paying fines to achieve their agenda. What precedence does this set? I would appreciate the same courtesy I gave you three short months ago of civilly maneuvering the system that aims to protect our legal rights to have recess. Second, the results of last year should encourage us to scrutinize restrictions we placed. In 2020, the fear of transmission was so great that even masking was not enough. All in the name of self-preservation, we closed schools, playgrounds, denied playtime with friends. Keeping the school closed was one of the worst options, if not the worst, and we were forced to choose it. As it did turn out, and mind you, private schools in El Paso opened safely last year with two of my children, and one meant unmasked. As it turned out, the harm to children exceeded the small benefit to adults. Hospitation rates of suicide, depression, anxiety all rose, so now schools are open, intellectual and physical, as well as their social and emotional damage to whom some still reap the effects and suffer in silence needs to still be considered and not trivialized. Psychological effects, one child suffers because they, we require them to wear a mask cannot be less considered than any other. The third point, the adage, masks saves lives, while appeals to my desire to care for others, I believe it is fair enough and needs to be heard that medical providers are not in 100% agreement in mask efficacy. It would be wise to hear from two medical providers with opposite opinions to make the best informed choice. Fourth, we need to think of the ramifications of not just masks, but other issues fear creates that go unchecked. Just last night, my son reported a feeling of depression and disinterest in going to school. I know his seizure was meaning no harm, but my son explained he was put in the back of the classroom because he was sneezing because of allergies. He said he would like to be with classmates again. I said, thank goodness he told me something, but I have the luxury of being present. Please know the unconscious desires to do no harm, reduce this virus to zero, or cover our bottoms will cause us to discriminate, segregate, and punish our children unintentionally as we did before. We all care about our kids, but is removing the mask mandate ban something you would like to uphold at all costs? Let us use what we, what is already available. Choose civility. Know that there are pros and cons about masks. Prioritize mental health. Recognize problems we create because of our tenacity and that in the end, trust parents are doing what is fair enough, safe enough, given all the tools we have kept, we have to keep all children intellectually, physically, emotionally, and socially safe. Thank you.
At this time, we have James Payne.
Someone directed that I could request that he speak when he arrives. He's just running a little late. Is that all right?
Legal? Would that be okay?
Of the gentleman? Oh, you can just put him toward the end of the list and
Fair enough.
And he can speak toward the end.
This time, Mr. Melvin Rodriguez? Again, Mr. Melvin Rodriguez? Go to our next speaker, Mr. Renee Rodriguez?
I signed up for two items because they're totally different, but I'm going to go ahead and
Are you, will you be speaking on the same item 3A?
Yes, and then I have traffic and some comments and stuff that was done on the other one, so I did ask to sign up for two.
Agenda.
We cannot
Okay, well then I'm going to talk about this.
Please, yes, please.
One of the things that I will say is, everybody that came up here talked very eloquently. I appreciate all the stats and the data. I agree with, with one of the union reps who said that, or the union president and the gentleman in the back as well. We tend to, to overreact. We overreacted at the beginning of COVID. For people that don't know, I was representative district at large for the city of Socorro. So I was in government when this hit. I did and we did mandate it because we didn't know how to act. But then we were getting a lot of feedback from residents, we were getting feedback from the government, Oscar Ocaranza, which I think in my mind, and this is just my opinion, I think is stupid. I've always said, I've always said that I know four people with PhDs personally, and I've always said that I'm smarter than three of those. I'm an educated man. I might not look much to you, okay? But I have business management, so I am educated. But I will say this, we tend to overreact. You're here because we elected you to do a job. We didn't elect you to be tyrants. We talked about stats, information, and we all believe in the same thing is that we need facts. But nobody talks about what happens when you wear a mask for over 30 minutes and you want to put that to our children. Okay? People that don't know, I work at a body shop. We sand a lot, so all that dust, so we use N95 masks, okay? I know what it is to wear a mask all day when I do work, okay? And I know that, and all my employees can tell you, that we have to take it off for a while to take breath of fresh air. Because it doesn't matter what kind of mask you wear. You do movement, you're going to need fresh air. But if you're going to force our children to wear it all day, then what are the health issues that you're putting my child at risk and the rest of our children at risk? We talk about all the science, but there's no doctor, there's nobody that comes out and says, hey, this are the effects of wearing a mask for so long. Okay? We don't need tyrants. We don't. What we need is facts. Do your homework, okay? Don't take it upon some guy that has no clue that when he's on phone calls or he's in meetings with us, he's like, oh, well, I'll get back to you. Because that's what he does. And I'm talking about Mr. Ocaranza's, okay? So please, please, I will tell you, don't be tyrants because elections have consequences. Okay? There's enough parents that don't like this, but don't take it upon yourselves to impose something that you don't know what the majority wants for our kids. It's very important, very vital that you listen to us and don't take action on this. Go out there and get second opinions. Because it's easy to sit there, I did it and I regret it. And I will say it again, I did it and I regret my decision because we were told a lot of lies. Nobody knew the facts. We didn't know how it spreads, we didn't know how long it takes on the desk, they gave us all of these fallacies and we ate it.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is John R. Hurt.
Good afternoon, everybody, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. The first thing I want to start off with, I don't have anything prepared, but let's say Abbott's law is, you know, he passed a law, we're not, can't mandate the mask. Okay, but it doesn't mean you can't wear it. So if anybody doesn't feel comfortable, wear your mask, okay? Governor Abbott doesn't say you cannot wear a mask, he says you can't mandate it. Okay? So this is still America, last time I looked, and I think every citizen here has the absolute right to protect themselves any way they see fit. If they want to wear a mask, wear a mask. If they want to wear a hood, wear a hood. If they want to wear one of those outfits they wear when they do bodywork, wear that, wear the screen, okay? That's all I got to say about that. And then the other thing I want to say is, nobody ever looks at the actual figures. Let's go with El Paso, Texas, okay? If anybody, I'm sure we got a math teacher here probably, do the math before you start scaring everybody half to death. According to the Google, El Paso has 963,000 people. I thought it was less than that, but according to Google, El Paso has 963,000 people. And so far, we've had about 2,400, a little over 2,400 deaths. That's .0025%. I don't know about you, but I'm not going to stay home, hide under my bed for .0025%. Nationally, nationwide, 325 million people, 650,000 deaths, .002%. Okay? In 2020, I don't know, before 2020, we were having 80,000 and 100,000 people die of influenza. I don't know if you guys know this, in 2020, nobody died of influenza. Everybody died of COVID. And even the CDC says their numbers are skewed because they counted about 40% of those numbers were people that died of other causes, but then when they went to the hospital in the morning, they tested them and they thought he had COVID. So if you die, I know a guy that had a motorcycle accident, died. The city said it was COVID. I have a very good friend of mine that died of a heart attack at work. They said it was COVID. So, you know, don't let them scare you to death, that's all they're doing. And other global deaths since January 1st to March 30th, coronavirus 35,000 globally since the first. Mothers during childbirth, 75,645. Seasonal flu, 118,980. Malaria, 240,056. Smoking, 1,223,439. Cancer, 2,009,990. Abortions, 10,402,251. Okay? So everybody, please, do what you got to do to keep yourself safe, but don't force it on everybody. It's still America. Let us have our own choices. As for me, I'm going to live my life. Thank you very much. Thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Asa Harden.
Hi, and it's Nisa. Nisa, yes. Thank you, school board. Thank you, interim superintendent Ms. Carmona. I'd like to address this issue with y'all as well as an employee of the district and I will, I like to kind of maybe push some of the emotions that we've heard tonight to the side. I know that, I do not envy your, your job tonight, that's for sure, in, in making this decision. I come to you in asking that you consider a temporary mask mandate. I come to you in asking that you consider a temporary mask mandate. Here's why. We thought, when we had the Alpha variant, that we had maybe taken a few steps ahead of COVID, that maybe we're gonna be able to put this pandemic behind us, at least here, maybe in the United States, more importantly, in El Paso. Our city is a city to be proudful in. We're at a 70% vaccination rate, top five city in the United States in vaccination. We thought this is great, and then here comes Delta. Delta changed the game. We know that a person who is positive, even if they're vaccinated, has the same viral load as someone who is unvaccinated. Why is that a concern? No virus has really done that before, that's kind of shocking scientists. That is a concern because that now vaccinated person can spread the virus. With that, in fact, one mitigation that we can have, in particular, for our elementary children, is that mask, just to keep that virus abated, because we do know that asymptomatic spread occurs. Temporary is the key word, a temporary mask mandate, until we get the CDC or our local health public entities giving us a different direction. I completely understand that the governor's executive order has made this a complicated issue, and as I said, I don't envy your decision tonight, but nonetheless, I do please ask that you protect particularly our kiddos who don't have access to a vaccine yet, are 12 and under, or 11 and under, really, but make it impose that mass, temporary mask mandate, K through 12. And thank you so much for your time, have a good evening.
Our next speaker, Ms. Amy Sansiri.
Good evening, thank you for your time. I want to start by saying I was one of those parents, and my children did have to leave the school district sadly last year because of everything. We did not want to leave. We wanted to stay, but we had to leave because we had no choice. There was no freedom, it was stripped away. My family is a retired military family, my husband served honorably 20 years, six deployments, four combat tours. Freedom means a lot different for our family and for my children and for many others in this community. I would say, what is the end game? Where are we going with this? I also worked in the news media for years. My background is in mass communications for broadcast television, and I was, been a news reporter, gosh, my entire life. I recently stepped out of that, you know why? Because the media is lying. There are no more ethics. Everything I learned in broadcasting school has gone out the window. There are not two sides to the story anymore, and it is sad what is happening. The real pandemic is not what's going on. If you think about it, it's obesity. If you go to theworldometer.info, you can just Google it, go to it, the real world statistics are there. Why are we not discussing this? Why are we not discussing exercise, nutrition? I mean, look at the school lunches, what the kids are served for breakfast and lunch, there's pure sugar in there, things that, yes, are gonna deplete their immune system and cause them to get sick. Why are we not having more exercise, talking about vitamins B, C, D, zinc, things that actually keep the immune system up and people truly healthy, you know? And then what about mental health? Have we even looked at that with these children? We are simply instilling fear into these children, and why? The mass majority of kids were so happy to go back to school. And if you talk to any parent, they will tell you that in these children's classrooms, I have both a third grader and a fifth grader, the majority of the kids have chosen in their parents not to wear masks. And guess what? There's, that's a choice, right? Yes, there are some of the kids that do have the mask, and they have all of the things, the protective gear and all of that, but the majority of these kids have chosen not to, and they're happy about it, they're happy to be back to normal and to truly be kids. Could you imagine if we grew up in this, what it would do to our mental health? Could you just imagine growing up as a child? What are we doing with their, with our kids? I'll end by saying this, you know, when we stood up, what did we start tonight? We started with the pledge. We said, "One nation, under God." Where in the Bible does it say that we need to mask our children? Mask, our child abuse, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Karen Newman. Newman? Yes. Samy Carejo?
Hello, my name is Sammy Carejo, and I'm a stakeholder here at SISD. What does that mean? That means that I have a say what happens in this district. We had meetings in the summer, pre-planning meetings. Were you guys here? Raise your hand, were you here? Raise your hand, raise your hand. Gotcha. All right. We were here.
President Morales. Speaker needs to address the board, not the audience.
Sir, just, we'll listen to you, just please address us, then we can-
Is that in the meetings? Is that in the paper? Financial, I mean, attorney?
This is a public meeting of the school board of the-
Gotcha. Is that in writing? Sir, sir, is that in writing? If not, thank you, sir. I am a disabled veteran, I can't hear properly. I, to communicate, I have to look at people. Is that all right with you, sir? Is that all right if I go ahead and do that? Gotcha, respectfully speaking. So during the summer, during these meetings, they said, "We need to get back to normal," and everybody applauded. Everybody said, "Hey, you know what? Some people feel safe, some people don't." And with all the input from the many meetings, you guys decided to what? Make it optional, correct? Yes or no? Can I ask, or is it, you guys can answer? Gotcha, they can't answer. Great, the answer is yes. The students were allowed to go back to school, masks were optional. But what happened? What happened from those dog and pony show meetings we had? And I use that term during those meetings. What's a dog and pony show? Where people get drafted, go to a meeting, and they're told like that what they say matters? When they're told that their vote matters? Did it matter? Did it really matter? No, because here we are, two months later, now having to fight back. Now, I understand that everybody feels different about this COVID stuff. I don't wear a mask, and unfortunately, I'm obese. But guess what? Vitamin C, vitamin D, zinc, exercising more than 30 minutes each day. Do you know it costs me more to buy all those vitamins to wear those masks? Why do I do it? Because my health is important to me. I choose what I do. So let me ask you this, will these masks make us better? Or will they make us feel better? Will they make us feel better? Do you think a piece of cotton in your face is going to stop anything from going through? The gentleman in the back, who paints for a living, do you think he can paint with any of these masks that you guys are wearing? Sir, what would happen if you would paint with any of these masks on? He would choke on the paint. He would choke on the paint. So do you think that if these masks can't stop paint, they're gonna stop a virus? Now, let's talk about the Delta variant. Who made that up? Was it an airline? I mean, some other company called it the Lambda variant. Lambda, 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 I mean, what are we calling it? Do you guys know, and forgive me, in all the respect to the medical society, I'm not a doctor, I might need to see one, but I'm not. But, I'm a numbers guy, okay? How many variants are out there? How many are there gonna be? Are we gonna go Delta? Are we gonna do Foxtrot? Golf Hotel? How many, and do you guys know that the virus has not been isolated? You see all those pictures on TV of the coronavirus, do you know that's not the actual virus? But yet, we have variants? How is that? Tell me. Follow the science, follow the science. What science? Using the word science does not make it scientific, does not make it scientific. Now, for those who are scared of being sick, great, I respect you. All I ask is you respect me as well. You have to remember, we all have rights, but your rights stop where mine start. Do not take my rights away from me. During this pandemic, I was at the hospitals fighting to get people out of those respirators. I had to sit there with families crying and their, and their family members dying. Why? Wear a mask. The mask will save us. Did they? You want to think outside the box, SISD? You want to do something different? I challenge you to do that. I challenge you to be the first district in the country to enforce vitamin C in the morning. How about we give our kids an orange in the morning? How much will that cost us? Wait a minute, we're already giving it to them, right? In the cafeteria. My mom worked in the cafeteria for 26 years. Food's horrible.
Mr. Carejo.
Gotcha. If I may, 30 more seconds. Okay, there's people not-
Go ahead, please address.
We have to stop living in fear. If these people who are sick want to wear their mask, bless them. Allow them to do it. But right now, we have the haves and the haves not. Why are you gonna take our rights away from them? We're not here. All of us without masks are not here saying, "You better take, take off your mask." Why are they saying that? I ask you, as a stakeholder, as a parent of three kids who attend this school district, do not make the mistake of trying to enforce these laws and saying temporary, a temporary restriction of your rights is still restricting your rights. There's no such thing as temporary. This was supposed to be 45 days long. We're past one year. Stop the insanity.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. I believe our final speaker will be James Payne.
I apologize for my dress, I was not able to change from my practice to here. I am not unsympathetic to the needs of the school board. I, having implemented among my employees and in my practices, infection control measures and spending months with no vaccine, having to work in people's mouths as them breathing their spittle all over me. So I am not insensitive to risks, and I dare say I face more. So I'm not insensitive, I respect you, and I don't wish to demonize you. I feel that what you want is a safe, happy environment for our students. That's what I want. So I think we can come from, we both want the same thing. There are dozens of things that we could talk about, and that I'm, I'm, I could lecture on at length about variants, particle sizes, various measures that people can take. This is probably not the forum for a detailed at-length discussion, so I'll just focus on maybe two things. The first is, I think masking is, is great. I would encourage everyone who's worried to wear a respirator. There are things that are much better, everyone who's wearing a mask, there are things that are much better, that are also cheap, that are readily available, and that you can get an N95 filtered mask, and not only will it help protect against coronavirus, but all kinds of other viruses, sore throats, and you will feel better. Absolutely true. I encourage you to get one, and it will be effective. What's more, it's effective independent of what anybody else chooses to do. And it's way more effective than any of those masks that any of you guys are wearing. And they're cheap and easy, and anybody can get them. So, if we're, I encourage anybody who's worried to wear one. Point number one. Last point. Forcing masks upon children, you know, as I deal with in my practice, people respond differently to the same treatment. There is not a good one-size-fits-all. You know, for example, there are lots of diseases that respond very well to penicillin. Well, I, people who are allergic to penicillin do not respond well to penicillin. A one-size-fits-all policy does not take into account that some children suffer physically, have respiratory issues, have trouble breathing, or have other aggravations and comorbidities associated with wearing masks. Physical problems are not the only problems. Mental, physical, and emotional problems affect different children differently. This one-size-fits-all policy, you are not taking into an account the broad spectrum of symptoms that children experience and adults experience. And so I, I think this one-size-fits-every policy is, is really doing a disservice to our children. And that's why I think parents are best equipped to take in the guidelines, take in the guidance from, from the school district, look at their kid and how their kid is responding. One-size-fits-all does not work. It also doesn't work in masks. You know, one-size mask does not fit all. We have child-sized masks and grown-up sized masks. So I just encourage you, one, anybody who is worried, and they're really worried, be really worried and get a mask that works. And I don't see very many people, if any, wearing one. So if you're worried, act like you're worried. Be intelligent. Get a mask that works. They're cheap and they're readily available. Two, please consider that every child is not the same. Every child reacts differently, and I would encourage you to be a little bit less heavy-handed. I love the work that the school district does for my children, as we walk across the street and straight into the school, and I love the teachers, and they've been so helpful to us, and there are so many good things. It is, this move is antagonizes so many people, and it's not necessary. It is so not necessary. Anybody who's worried, go down and get yourself a good mask instead of what you're wearing.
Thank you, Mr. Payne.
All right? I love you, all right?
Thank you.
Mr. Morales, have a great day.
You too, sir, thank you. The gentleman's name? I don't have his name here. Number three? No, there was a Bohemian we called.
Mr. Morales. I believe there was one more that didn't get to speak, Melvin Rodriguez?
Yeah, see, we didn't have this. Number three.
Noah Leva.
No, we don't have an Alivas. We're gonna go ahead, Mr. Russell Bohemius, please come to the podium. I apologize, it wasn't, I didn't have it here.
No problem. I thank you all for giving me this moment to express my thoughts on this. My name is Russell Bohemius. I work at transportation as a bus driver. I do come in close contact with students as they get on and off the bus. More importantly, what I've seen since I've been here is, we have unions representing teachers, bus drivers, everybody else. And the few people that have spoken tonight are representing the children. And I would like to say that, like them, I oppose the masks. I'm your typical 70-year-old man with various health conditions. I'm not alarmed by the children getting on and off the bus. I wear a mask. they want to have their children wear masks or not. And I leave that with you all this evening, and I appreciate your time and hope you'll make the right decision for the children and not for the adults that are working here at the school particularly.[613.88][613.88][applause]
Thank you, sir. We're going to go ahead and proceed to the business at hand. Item...
David.
Give me one.
Heather Nieto.
Okay. Okay. It was, we have Heather Nieto. Nieto, she is here now? I apologize to you. I didn't realize it.
My apologies. Interim Superintendent Carmona, President Morales, Board Members, esteemed colleagues. Forgive me. I wear this all day. My name is Heather Nieto. I am a teacher at El Dorado High School. In a recent transplant to El Paso, I came from Phoenix, Arizona. This is my 15th year teaching, and I love what I do. It's my life. My kids are my life. I love seeing my AP Language and Dual Credit kids discuss and wrangle with deep concepts about rhetoric and argumentation. We debate. We support our claims with peer-reviewed evidence. And we concede when we've heard alternative points of view that make sense and are supported by facts and statistics. We just had this lesson today in my class. In the state of Texas, as of today, according to the Department of Health and Human Services' website, we're averaging nearly 12,000 cases per day of new COVID-19 infections. The majority of those are of the Delta variant. The state's seven-day average is over 14,000 cases per day. This time last month, we had a daily average of just 430 cases, with a seven-day average of just under 1,800 cases per day. In El Paso, in El Paso County, a month ago, we were at 12 cases per day and 27 as a seven-day average. Today, as of 4:00 this afternoon, when I was finishing up my draft, we have 133 cases per day and 131 cases per seven-day average. Think about that exponential growth of cases in such a short time. While our numbers may be small in comparison to the state numbers, it's an exponential growth that is showing no signs of abating. What's the solution to this issue? Well, one thing that is protecting us from Houston or Dallas-Fort Worth levels of COVID, where my family is, it's something, it's our vaccination rate. It's something that we should be very proud of. However, children under the age of 12, children like my son, who is 11, with asthma and a heart condition, they don't have the ability to vaccinate right now. The CDC is saying that they will not have the ability to vaccinate until at least January. Delta is hitting them the hardest. Our ICUs are filling up. Short of vaccination, we can mandate masks. This is simple. It's a simple step that costs us little to nothing and will help us to mitigate spread from older children to younger children. Children who don't have a full fighting chance against COVID. Students who cannot mask for whatever reason should have the ability to attend online. If they can't mask, they should have that opportunity. We should quarantine those who are exposed and those who are sick. I have six of my own students now who are having to quarantine. I know, I'm sorry, I'm finishing up. I know that the governor has issued an executive order, which is not a law. It is an executive order. Houston, Austin, Dallas ISD have already said, "No, we're not going to do that. We're going to protect our kids who cannot vaccinate." Those are the ones we should be looking after.[828.88][828.88][applause] The adults who say that not putting on a mask, that's their choice? Yeah, you're an adult. That is your choice. If you get COVID, like I did, from a student last fall, if you get COVID, it's not a good experience. We had 11 of our teachers at my campus get COVID. One of them is permanently disabled, and we had three pass away. I don't want to see that happen to my coworkers. I don't want to see that happen to my colleagues. I don't want to see that happen to your kids. It's a simple solution. And I ask you, I implore you, please consider a mask mandate. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.[872.63][872.63][applause]
We're going to go ahead and move to the item at hand, item 3A, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Mask Policies for All Students and Personnel in SISD. I am scheduled to be the presenter, however, I'm going to yield it over to Mr. Pablo Barreda at this time.
Mr. Morales, thank you. President Morales, thank you. I want to first off and say thank you to Mr. Castellano, Mr. Mena, for allowing this special session to happen. You know, I myself am a combat veteran, retired law enforcement. In my life, I have seen a lot of death, and I've seen kids die. I would be okay with a parent telling me, or anybody telling me, "You know what? I don't agree with you mandating a mask mandate." But I'm not okay with a parent coming to me and saying, "What could you have done better to protect and save my child?" I've seen it enough.[929.00][929.00][applause] I've seen it enough in my life that it has scarred me to see those kids, and I will not stand for that. And yet, even though Governor Abbott has his executive order, it's already been looked at, and if I'm not mistaken, it's Austin County that has already said, they're going to, they're fighting it already, and they already waived it. So you have Austin ISD, Dallas ISD, and Houston, that their superintendents alone already said it. The board didn't even have to do it. They took the initiative to say, "You know what? We're going to do it because we care about our kids. I care about our kids." And I'm pretty sure the rest of the board here cares about our kids. And we talk about social, emotional health. We want our kids in class. So do I. I'm worried about their social, emotional health. I do want them in a brick-and-mortar school. I really do. But we got to do that safely. We got to try to put things in place to protect them, even if it's a temporary, and we got to continue to work with the state, whether it's TAA, Governor Abbott, to see what other options are available. But right now, this is the only option to help mitigate it because you do have kids who do have health concerns. What about their lives? Those are the ones that I'm also worried about. I'm worried about every single child that walks in through that door. Worried about every single faculty and staff member that walks through that door, to include the parents, grandparents, uncles, aunts, whatever that kid takes at home to them. I am worried for them. And I do want to put this out there for the record. I did ask for Dr. Ocaranza to be here. He's obviously the county expert. Whether some of us agree with him or not, I had asked for him to be placed on the agenda item. He was not. And he was also told, and I would like to find out as to why a district employee was told to call him and tell him not to come. So there was a directive there. Yet I tried to get the experts over here to give the info, and yet they were discouraged and told not to come. That is not the wisest thing to do. So I'm going to ask this. If our superintendent would be willing to jump on board with the other superintendents in the state to make this a mandate to protect our kids and students?[1070.13][1070.13][applause]
You know, I appreciate the feedback of everyone who spoke tonight. Our district has been, for the last 15 months, doing everything that we can to protect our students. We have done all, we have followed all the recommendations from our local health authorities, and we follow the science. And also, I am not objecting to continue to preserve the safety of our students and our faculty and our staff. And I am going to say that we have to follow the executive order, and we...[1116.23][1116.23][applause] However, however, we are obliged because we're a school district that has to follow local, state, and federal laws. That does not mean that I do not put the safety of our students first. But this is an ever-evolving situation, and it changes daily. So I would like to request that the board seek legal counsel so that we can make a decision in the best interest of the school district and our students.[1148.66][1148.66][applause]
Thank you, Ms. Carmon. At this time, first of all, I'd also too like to thank all the individuals that came out tonight to speak. I personally, I've been called and approached by the media throughout the last couple of days, and this is obviously something of grave concern. And so we're going to really, really make, consider all the options and all the, everything that was discussed tonight. Thank you again. At this time, we have some discussion questions here. Mr. Castellano, please.
I would like to make a comment too. Mr. Barreda supported me with this topic. I was in law enforcement for 29 years, and we enforce laws that restrict all our freedoms, that put a restriction on what we can and cannot do to each other or just our normal way of life. We're trying to mitigate a problem here that, as we discussed, it's growing exponentially. I will always vote for the safety of the children. That's what I'm looking out here. We all live in a controlled society where we have a social contract, where we just have to help each other out survive this. We have to move forward together. It's not a permanent solution, and I agree with, we don't need masks, but we don't need to be shutting down the school if something goes wrong. We need to keep everybody in school. And it's such a simple solution to move forward and allow this to our most vulnerable population, we need to address it. You know, we can't wait. If we have to, well, we'll discuss it in legal counsel, but we have to do what's right for the children. As adults, we do need to take care of our most vulnerable population.[1261.83][1261.83][applause]
Mr. Castellano?
Mr. Morales.
Go ahead, Mr....
I'd like to ask our legal counsel, what are the ramifications right now that we're looking at from the state?
Good evening, everyone. Okay? Is it off? Here we go. Good evening, everyone. Look, this is what I suggest. We're on an item that clearly has generated some questions from you all. You need legal advice. Legal advice is typically given in closed session. I would recommend that someone make a motion to move in closed session, into closed session, and that would be under Texas Government Section 552.071. That is my recommendation. I would need a motion from you all to discuss this item in closed session to answer any of your questions.
I'll go ahead and request that.
Second.
This issue requires us to consult, obviously, with our legal counsel and receive legal advice. I request the board convene in closed session under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. Is there, I want to make the motion. Is there a second? Yes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we've got basically...
You have to vote. Well, it's your motion, but you'll have to vote.
I'm going to go ahead and vote. I say I want "aye." I'm going to say that we do go to closed session and talk to our legal advice. Or talk to legal...
What's our vote count? What was the vote count? What was the vote count?
I couldn't understand you.
What was the vote count?
It was 4-3.
To go to closed session?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I apologize for that. Did we get that on the record? Okay. We got that on the record. Okay. At this time, we're going to move into, let me make sure we're on the same script here. We're going to move to executive session. The meeting is to be closed to consider also administrative recommendation for assistant principal position at possible...
Mr. Morales? It would be just executive session for our attorney to advise us is to, the specifics around this item and any ramifications that we might, or consequences associated to this particular item.
Yeah, that's correct. Trustee, knock it out.
Is that correct?
So you're making, you're making a motion...
Okay, so we have two.
And this is the reason why you need a motion, is because you're on an item that is an open session. It hasn't been marked for closed session. You have the liberty to go into closed session on an item that's not listed under closed session. You just have to tell the public why. And in this case, you're seeking legal advice under the section that you've already read into the record.
Yes.
So all you have to do is let us know the time that you're moving into closed session, and we can move in.
Our time is 7:06. We're going to go ahead to closed session. I'm going to come back from open executive session at this time. The time is 7:51. Item at hand is, we consider approval, talking about the discussion and possible action regarding mask policies for all students and personnel in SISD. We have discussion on that. Any discussion at this time?
Morales? You know, it's, I never thought doing the right thing would be so hard. I never thought trying to figure out what the right thing was would be so difficult. You know, unfortunately, there's opinions on, I wish there was just two sides. What I can share is that personally, I have been affected, you know, by this pandemic. I wish I could stand up here and say that I hadn't. You know, and for those of you who know me, you know how I've been affected. I wish it was over. I wish we didn't have to sit here and talk about any of this. I wish we were back celebrating and recognizing, you know, the success of our students. I wish the hardest decisions we had to make were what to name our next two schools and who our next superintendent was going to be. I never thought I'd look forward to trying to make those decisions, but actually, I wish we could be considering that right now instead. I know that we're trying to make the best decision possible with the information that we have on, you know, on hand. The information continues to come in, and, you know, regardless of the action that we take, you know, I hope everybody just remembers that we're trying to protect our kids, we're trying to protect the community. You know, I think someone earlier said that we're not health experts, and I have to say, "Yeah, I'm not." I work in healthcare, worked in healthcare straight out of high school, and I know what our medical personnel are advising. I know what my employer is doing to protect, you know, all the employees. We work in hospitals every day, and I know what they're doing. I also know that our governor is not a medical expert either. And yet, there's been actions taken there as well. But regardless, you know, again, regardless of the decision, I hope everybody just remembers that, that we're trying to do the right thing, and hopefully, you know, nobody blames us for, you know, whatever action is taken, just remembering that we're trying to do the right thing.
Mr. Nowara, go ahead, Mr. Barreda.
Just to share kind of the same sentiment that Mr. Nowara said, we're just looking at the best interests of our students, of our faculty, just trying to do our piece to contribute to society, to eliminate this pandemic. And it is, it's not...
to answer any of your questions.
I'll go ahead and request that.
Second.
This issue requires us to consult, obviously, with our legal counsel and receive legal advice. I request the board convene in closed session under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. Is there, I'm gonna make the motion. Is there a second? Yes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
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 Okay, we've got basically split here.
Well, it's your motion, but...
I'm gonna go ahead and vote. I say I want aye. I'm gonna say that we do go to closed session and talk to our legal advice. Or talk to legal...
What's our vote count?
What was the vote count? What was the vote count?
I couldn't understand you.
What was the vote count? What was the vote count?
It was 4-3.
To go to closed session?
Yes, sir.
I apologize for that. Did we get that on the record? Okay. We got that on the record. Okay. At this time, we're gonna move into, let me make sure we're on the same script here. We're gonna move to executive session. The meeting is to be closed to consider also administrative recommendation for assistant principal position at Paso del...
Mr. Morales. It would be just executive session for our attorney to advise us is to, the specifics around this item and any ramifications that we might, or consequences associated to this particular item.
Yeah, that's correct. Triste Nakada.
Is that correct?
So you're making, you're making a motion.
Okay, so we have to.
And this is the reason why you need a motion is because you're on an item that is an open session. It hasn't been marked for closed session. You have the liberty to go into closed session on an item that's not listed under closed session. You just have to tell the public why. And in this case, you're seeking legal advice under the section that you've already read into the record. So all you have to do is let us know the time that you're moving into closed session and we can move in.
Our time is 7:06. We're gonna go ahead and go to closed session. Come back from open executive session at this time. The time is 7:51. Item at hand is we consider approval, talking about the Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Mask Policies for All Students and Personnel in SISD. We have discussion on that. Discussion at this time.
Morales.
You know, it's, I never thought doing the right thing would be so hard. I never thought trying to figure out what the right thing was would be so difficult. You know, unfortunately, there's opinions on, I wish there was just two sides. What I can share is that personally, I have been affected, you know, by this pandemic. I wish I could stand up here and say that I hadn't. You know, and for those of you who know me, you know how I've been affected. I wish it was over. I wish we didn't have to sit here and talk about any of this. I wish we were back celebrating and recognizing, you know, the success of our students. I wish the hardest decisions we had to make were what to name our next two schools and who our next superintendent was gonna be. I never thought I'd look forward to trying to make those decisions, but actually, I wish we could be considering that right now instead. I know that we're trying to make the best decision possible with the information that we have on, you know, on hand. The information continues to come in. And, you know, regardless of the action that we take, you know, I hope everybody just remembers that we're trying to protect our kids. We're trying to protect the community. You know, I think someone earlier said that we're not health experts. And I have to say, yeah, I'm not. I work in healthcare. Worked in healthcare straight out of high school. And I know what our medical personnel are advising. I know what my employer is doing to protect, you know, all the employees. We work in hospitals every day. And I know what they're doing. I also know that our governor is not a medical expert either. And yet, there's been actions taken there as well. But regardless, you know, again, regardless of the decision, I hope everybody just remembers that, that we're trying to do the right thing. And hopefully, you know, nobody blames us for, you know, whatever action is taken, just remembering that we're trying to do the right thing.
President Morales.
Now, go ahead, Mr. Barreda.
Just to share, kind of the same sentiment that Mr. Nakada said. We're just looking at the best interests of our students, of our faculty, just trying to do our piece to contribute to society to eliminate this pandemic. And it is, it's not, it's an easy, but it's also a hard decision. And whatever action we take as a board, just rest assured that in our hearts, the kids and the faculty, or at least in my heart for sure, and I'm pretty sure with the rest of the board. So, and like I said earlier, you know, as a combat veteran, I've seen enough of that in my life. And I don't, I want to do my piece to try to end that and not contribute to that. So just rest assured that we're doing our best to keep our students and faculty and staff safe and the community to do our part.
Is there any further discussion at this time? Do we have a motion? We're gonna go ahead and move to Item 4, Executive Session. The meeting is to be closed to consider administrative recommendation for assistant principal position at Paso del Norte School under Texas Government Code, Section 551.074. The time is 7:56. Back in session from, I'm sorry, back from executive session at this time. The time is 8:06. Discuss new business, Item 5. Consider approval of administrative recommendation. Miss President, Ms. Marta C. Carmona?
President Morales, members of the board administration recommends Mr. Latre Waters to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal at Paso del Norte School.
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion was made by Mr. Eddie, Mr. Paul Geta, and a second by Mr. Eddie Mena. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Is there any further business for this board at this time? We will adjourn the meeting at 7, I'm sorry, 8:07. Meeting is now adjourned.